I don't even know all their names.
Been around for awhile.
We gotta get something padding on that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we need discussion, we need to make approval in a minute.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Yes ma'am.
Yes.
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 Okay, any discussion, we can do approval of the financial report.
Okay, we take the July record, representation of accounts about 1,505,894.67. So 731. And the expense, roughly 61,705.12.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I've got to ask you, I've been part of here, back here at all. Well, with the air, I'm a creative, I can't hear you.
Well, the, uh...
One million five oh five, I couldn't hear me.
One million five oh five, eight ninety four sixty seven.
That's in all funds, right?
That's all the funds, that's how the funds is getting. And then the amount for all four checks written were sixty one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and twelve cents.
What's the three hundred dollars and seventy four cent adjustment?
I'll have to ask, I'm not sure what that is.
That was an adjustment that had to be made on overpaying two workers.
I'll make a motion, we accept the financial report.
I will second it.
Yes.
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 Okay, I'm gonna let you guys sign it this time, but don't lose it.
Make sure, don't you, don't let nobody leave until you get it back. Kim, you have a public comment, uh, you want to do something for them?
Uh, yes, um, comment I wanted to discuss was, um, Dan and I experienced this when I lived in Dan. We experienced, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, uh, it was around eleven, eleven thirty at night, I heard, uh, like someone in my driveway, the Stones, so I kinda, you know, yelled out, you know, you know, "What are you doing?" Well, I didn't see anything that they were doing at the time, other than someone walking in the driveway on the Stones. So I yelled out to Dan, and Dan seen the two kids. And I think it wasn't one of the white shorts. And Dan's got a permit, and, uh, you know, there he goes. So he told me to call Betsville Police or the sheriff. Which I called the sheriff department, they sent, uh, a couple, a couple sheriff cars we'd seen. And the one sheriff was down at Garn's house, talking to him. And then he left, and then he came back, and he was out of his vehicle there for about an hour. And then we noticed the kid in white shorts. Don't know what was going on, he was there for at least an hour and left. So the next day, I called the sheriff department to see if they found anything or what, and they said on his report, he found nothing. I said, "Then why was he there twice and out of his vehicle for an hour?" And the kid was there, he never came to our door or nothing. What my thing is, why isn't there a curfew here in Betsville where these kids, you know, needed to be off the street? You know, around at eleven, eleven thirty at night, you know, they're breaking in cars, houses, you know, I mean, they're up to no good as far as I'm concerned. I'm just wondering, uh, you know, why isn't there a curfew?
There is a curfew.
There is a curfew.
Okay, um, what time is the curfew?
It's at eleven o'clock for minors and twelve o'clock for, what is it?
It shouldn't be no later than eleven o'clock. And then, I think if you're a certain age, then you can stay out till midnight.
Till midnight, yeah.
Enough to nap there.
Experiences again, are we to call, uh, something, our county sheriff department again, or what?
Well, obviously, because I don't think we have any policemen on duty.
Well, that's, see, that's what people on town need to understand. And don't call this office, 'cause the dispatcher over there is who dispatches our department. So, when people call the office and don't get an answer, then everybody's all upset because they never have responded to you. And even when we, when we have an officer on duty, that sheriff's office knows, they, they put that officer on duty, so you should always call the sheriff.
How about we just forward the call? That would be easy to do, forward the call directly to the sheriff's department.
Well...
Depends on what the call is.
Kinda when I just got the answer machine, and I took that stuff on and called the sheriff department, that's how I knew of it.
Can I ask what street you live on, please?
I live on Dale Street.
Deal.
Yeah, I never even realized when we'd been there that, you know, that's a very bad area where we're at. And the house that I'm renting off, Nancy Hobbins, um, it is a nice home, it's all redone inside. I know Dan and I are still looking for another place to rent because of that area, so bad. And, um, you know, we've heard like four o'clock in the morning, we've heard people up on our porch. You know, and it's, I never knew stuff like this went on in this town, um, we kinda had it in with...
It kinda goes through every town, I think.
Yeah.
Not just Betsville.
Well, I didn't know that was a bad area.
How many police officers do we have?
Right now, we have two, but we, we're getting ready to hire two more.
You have any part-time officers? Like, you know, the county and stuff has, uh...
They're all part-time.
No, no, what I'm asking is...
Reserves, you mean?
Yeah. We used to call them, because I used to be a part-time deputy.
Yeah, they were, you were reserved, you worked for nothing.
Right, mostly donated my time.
Yeah, yeah.
And my point is, the reason that we had part-time deputies is just to be seen. That's the most important job of law enforcement, is to be out there and be seen.
Oh, yeah. I agree with that, yeah.
And, you know, in this town, you can't see shit. I don't mean that, you know, because if you go out, all these young whippersnappers you got out here, we don't have to worry about nothing, nobody's around.
Yeah, you're right.
If you just had the cruiser, just drive up down the street, I don't care who's running, driving. You know, make a show, especially at night.
Yeah, at night.
You know, the crime, the crime really starts from like, let's say, uh, let's tell what, uh, we always had to be on...
Dust to dawn.
Ten to three o'clock in the morning before.
That's the time it usually is, between three and four.
But we're in the process of hiring two more, so we will, we are getting our force built up.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just, for the expense wise, you know, did you ever consider?
Reserve, sure.
We used to always have.
Yeah, we did.
I'm just saying that...
Nobody wants to do it anymore.
Just have somebody in the vehicle, just to drive.
They're having trouble getting officers to apply, Greensprings, Allendale, town.
Oh, yeah. You know, back in my days, you know, we used to go to...
Yeah, there was a lot.
There was a lot.
I went there when I had to go to court. I did that on my own time.
At one time, we used to have a dozen auxiliary officers. But that was...
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that might be something to look into this day and age, because, you know, there's such a thing, you know, the liability of it, might be a little expensive there, but you know, for pain wise, you know, and just for the body to be out on the, on the street.
That was right.
And maybe some, I mean, you know, that's something to look into, I think. That's my opinion, 'cause I used to do it.
Yeah, and when you did it, there was a whole bunch of them.
Well, yeah, we had, uh, I think we had twenty-three.
Yeah.
And like I say...
Yeah, we, we had it, uh, advanced, you know, officers to rent.
Oh, sure.
The problem is, we can't even get people to apply to the chamber.
You're really, you're kidding, right?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, if someone wanted to be an auxiliary, absolutely. But the problem is, we can't even get people to apply, or alone we get auxiliary.
We're kinda like a training station, and they go there.
People come and get trained, and then they get a position with Tiff and...
Oh, yeah, it, it's in that aspect.
We're kinda like a jumping stone.
But if you're, if you're gonna get a reserve officer, or something like that, you know, you mainly air for the town?
Right, you know, we're...
I'm, I'm just saying, that might be something to put out, and make you know it's interesting.
You know, say something to Brandon, because I know...
Didn't we used to get them right out of the police, that they were still in the police academy and just trying to get...
Yeah, you could done that back then, too, but...
Well, we did do that, we used to have a bunch, and then all of a sudden, you know, they're just...
We went, uh, Tiff and I worked out of Southern County, back in, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy, you know, so... We had a variety of, you know, people, but, and it worked out well, of course, you know, Sheriff Neff and...
Well, if you probably look around, you're gonna try to not find any volunteers to do anything anymore, regardless of whether it's police work or anything, you know, nobody...
There's, there's a lot of people that care, I, I liked it.
Yeah, there is some, but there's a lot that don't, too, you know, so...
So, I mean, you know, you got anybody, you just need a body, just drive around, they don't know.
You know, I, I like Dan's idea, but I'm wondering if, I like it a lot, but I don't know that we could put anybody in that car, it wasn't licensed police... I mean, I like the idea, don't get me wrong.
The thing of it is, you have to, uh, you can't really give the police power.
Right.
But, you know, you have the power that...
Just...
The radio to call, you know, you're a witness.
Yeah. My con, my only concern, and I really do like your idea, but my only concern, if there were a real incident, and somebody's flagging down the police, he'd pull up and say, "Well, I really can't help you."
Well, yes, he can.
On the radio, though, that's true.
The thing of it is, he can call for help, he can do, uh, any person can do, uh, any kind of assistance, you know? The thing of it is, if you start, let's say, doing first aid on somebody, you'd have to stay until somebody else...
Qualified.
Would release you, otherwise I'd consider it abandonment.
Yeah.
You know, you'd get arrested for that, or, you know...
Right, which you can fall under Good Samaritan law doing that.
That's what I'm saying, there's a few things...
The only problem is, is if they are under the assumption that you are an officer, that could be an issue. 'Cause I agree a hundred percent.
We could ask Rick, off the top of your head, what do you think?
You can have a block, block watch if you want, but you don't put a, a civilian in a police cruiser with apparent authority?
Well, I'm not saying that.
Okay, and that's how people are understanding you, but if you want a block watch, you can.
What I'm saying is, you, you need something out there that has the police on the side, just drive around, that's all you have to do. That's what we used to do. You know, when we first started that reserve, that's what we did, you know? Eventually, we, you know, got some training, and then we moved out, you know? But, uh, and that's, you know...
Yeah, no, we'll, I'll get with Brandon on that, and we'll...
See where our options are.
See what our options are.
I was hoping Brandon...
But I'm sure that, I'm sure that, well, he's on a deal, so he couldn't be here.
Brandon's from Moulton Plaza, he's a K-9 officer there. Yeah.
Because, do we, well, I was hoping to ask him several questions, but I guess that'll have to wait.
Yeah.
But everyone should understand, really, that the office number over there is more for non-emergencies.
Right.
Yeah.
Everyone, if they've got an issue that they need police attention to, should always call the sheriff.
But he, but he, we are all...
'Cause we're dispatched out of there.
If I don't get there, I'll call the sheriff.
Well, Brandon is also looking into making the, the cellphone that number. And if there's an officer on duty, it'll be answered. I mean, he'll have it with him in the cruiser, whatever. So, he's looking to get that changed over here shortly. So, he will have that, and then you, if there's one on, with that number, if one's on duty, they'll answer the phone. It'll be right with them at all time, when they're on duty.
But also, too, you can't have a, a police officer sitting out here on the road, just sitting there looking down at, doing his homework, or whatever he's doing, you know, because he's a trainee. You know, he's, he's in the process of going to school, or whatever.
Well, the ones that we get are, they're, they're already graduated from the academy.
Well, yeah, but you got one that was sitting out here one day, and I watched him for forty-five minutes, and he never once picked his head up or nothing. And if he had his radar on, it sure now had to beep, you know? So, I mean, you know, there, there's certain things you gotta watch for.
Oh, sure.
And being a young, young officer, you know, then you got the same problem in experience.
Okay, well, we, we appreciate it, and we will look into, or Brandon, see what he has to say.
Are you sure? He's still got slants on your face.
It's just a hard life.
Okay, we'll go to reports from committees, finance, budget audit, Scott?
Oh, I think we discussed the financials.
Anybody got any questions on it? Police, you should have the police report in front of you. Uh, looks like citations, three to two, slash month, ten verbal warning, written, or, verbal or written warnings, one juvenile complaint. And it'd be an department office computer.
God, we didn't have any adult complaints, cheesy. They, they must not be fighting anymore, right?
Did I, did you hear about any vandalism to the bus garage?
No, I did not.
There was.
Was there?
Yeah. Spray paint, uh, within the last two weeks, I was over there, Jared got with me, I got with Brandon, and he was gonna file a report, they need it for insurance purposes. But they sprayed graffiti of some, whatever game.
On the buses or on the garage itself?
On the garage door itself.
Yeah, cheesy.
I think, that night, we were talking about this, I seen three kids, and I don't know who they were, I mean...
It's probably the same ones.
It was like ten o'clock at night, or something like that, or, and they just headed off down that way. I turned around, looked, and they weren't on David Street anymore, so I know they had to cut through the school grounds. So, that means they were heading that direction.
You know, if they were kids, though, they either had a ladder, or they had, somebody was holding them, because...
It's pretty high, huh?
Yeah, I mean, for me to stand in front of it...
These were little ones, these were, these were probably high school.
Where, where is Brandon, why is he not here today?
He had his job, he's on a thing, on a stint.
Do you know, over the last however many weeks you want to average, how many hours he's putting in? I'm kinda frustrated at the whole situation. How many hours is he putting in, as our police chief? Does anybody know? I've been hearing it's next to none.
I can't, what is it, it's like probably ten hours per pay period or something?
I don't know, off the head, I can't think of it.
He was hired at only, what, twenty hours per pay period today, so...
But he's not even doing that.
I mean, he's, he's...
I mean, this is kinda ridiculous, this has been since last November that we've had this problem. We keep saying we can't hire people, we gotta come up with some solution. If y'all rewind to November, when, can I finish, please?
Go ahead, but...
If y'all rewind to the fiasco, when six officers left the department, you might understand why we can't get people.
It was your fault they left.
Oh, you, you ask them, you ask them.
Okay, we're not gonna go into this.
My fault they left, that's a good one.
Anyhow, Brandon, I just, we just told you, he's hiring two more officers right now.
I've been hearing that for a month. He was here last...
They just graduated from academy, they will be here.
Okay.
Hey, I hired Dan for, he's retired.
Fire Steve.
Okay, busy month with fourteen calls, yearly total is sixty-seven. Uh, fire department provided, uh, coverage for the fireworks. And received the funds for state fire equipment grant, gear is being sized August ninth, all members will be getting new gloves as well. And the department would like to welcome firefighter Steve Schwoko and cadet Jacob Snell to the department. We're also looking to add two more members to the department this month. And would like to thank Captain Eric Devaney for fifteen years of service to the department. Eric has resigned in the department, from the department, to join Kansas Fire and help them out at Station One.
You lost a lot of people. Any questions for Steve on fire?
How would, how would you gotta be, to be a fireman?
I guess he's eighteen, though.
Eighteen, yeah. I thought he was eighteen.
Is Jake eighteen?
No, that's why he's a cadet.
Cadet.
Hmm, okay.
He's a co-pilot.
Oh.
Clay keeps the bag clean, wash his truck.
That's not a bad thing, I mean, that's...
Well, no, no, it's a cert, at least, yeah.
Where all the equipment is, uh...
Yeah, that's good.
Good little project. If you get the other generation involved, that's what I do.
Anything for Steve, okay, clean up, George?
No, I don't have anything.
I see they mowed down the grass from running out, so...
Did you do that, John?
I don't know who did.
No.
Who did that?
That was some company came and done that.
So we gotta try to find out what the name of the bank for ages.
Oh, Wager's House?
Down on, um...
Or Stagger's Hill House?
Yeah, yeah.
No, Carolyn was on the phone with banks all last week.
Oh, what's he, good, good, good.
George, can I say something, I called you one time about the house beside the...
Yeah.
That, that is on the ass of the island.
Yeah.
If you could be, go down and check it out.
Talk to him again, okay. Well, when I talked to you, and then you, you called me back and said you'd talk to him, and you, you felt sorry for him there, you, you know, so I didn't know which way to go here, you know?
Yeah, well, now I think, he got really irritable with my husband, you know, he has a dog, and I think, they have a mold, you should go down and see it, and it's worse than all the...
Well, I, I wanted to go and just rip everything off that front porch, but I just don't know what I'm allowed to do here.
I'd love to, probably.
Don't go on somebody's front porch.
I can't, I can't go up to the property and...
Especially stay off it at four o'clock in the morning, they're already making complaints.
Good, you don't know how many people I would like to go and...
No, somebody's that dumb to come on our porch and turn them on, you know?
Okay, I'll talk to him again, okay.
That's some butt cleaning the dog shit out of there.
Yeah, we smell that, it's, I feel really sorry for Reece. Dan's been going over, we've been trying to like, making sure it's fed, and a lot of times it doesn't have water, so Dan's been giving it fresh water, he got really mad at Dan.
So is it just tied up and nobody pays attention?
No, it's, it's been in the garage all summer, and the dog, the dog crap in there, and it's smelling come all over our...
A few main sources.
All the dogs, the dog warden.
Because they're supposed to have water.
Yes.
Well, you gotta eat, goes over it once in a while, gives you water, you know?
Well, it's still not proper care. It's still not proper care.
But still call the dog warden and report it, have him check it out.
But I figured if I did that, they would be more determined, more after us, that's why, you know...
Well, I can, I can call them, I'm not afraid of the dog warden.
But it, but they've gotta arrive at a time when the dog doesn't have these things.
The dog barks, I mean, at night, because this is really weird, I think because it's afraid of the dark, and it'll bark, and bark, and bark, but I kinda like that, because, you know, some security, even though I have a, a schnauzer, you know, stays inside, that, you know, barks. Reece, Reece is a very good dog, he takes and tells people that, "You put it in there because people are stealing his tools, lock your garage." The dog is a big baby, and he acts like the dog is vicious, and it's not, it's a sweetheart.
Okay, yeah. Okay, John Waters, Silver Street.
On the street, we're just mowing, and Rick's got some information on signs and stuff coming here, and we're gonna go along with your stuff later. We're having some problems with the first zero-turn mower that we bought in oh-three. I'm pretty sure it's got a little bit of gas in it, which I can do this much of a deal, but it's got quite a few hours on it, so... I got a price on a new sixty-inch with a rear discharge, which would be a lot better for the cemetery. I told them it's nothing we're gonna do this year, that we're looking at something in the spring, but, uh, it's about twelve thousand dollars, but on the bid program, it knocks it down to nineteen hundred. So, just kinda keep that in mind. On sewer and water, uh, nothing with the facilities, but I've got, uh, governmental systems that's gonna give me a quote on, uh, program to do the billing. And, uh, CMI, which stands for something, Creative Micro Systems, they do it also, too. And they're actually sending somebody here to meet with us next week, 'cause the billing program that we have now, we've been having some issues with it. It, it'll throw adjustments in at the end of the month that were never made, and it's real confusing. And the auditor said something about it last time, so...
I'm gonna ask you, too, about that new sign they put up there in the post office, the, uh, there's been three people run into it face first, and some girl got knocked off her bicycle, 'cause she didn't see it either. I mean, they have to put it there? I mean, you already had one on the pole.
They didn't contact us, that's a state highway.
It's dangerous.
I never knew anything about this, until I seen them there with the big rig one, one, and they were found in the interstate.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess we're gonna have to learn to walk around it, I saw it.
You're gonna watch where you go.
Oh, my word, yeah, no, I bet that's...
Or when somebody finally drives over it, that's all I'll say.
Well, they run over it, they're gonna be up over the curb, yeah.
Semi over, I get it.
Yeah, I'll get it. But that's all I got for Waters, you know?
Okay. In park, I wanna say is that we have been renting out the shelter houses every weekend, a couple of them. And I've been going out cleaning them, sweeping them, morsing them down, and seeing that everything's mowed. Uh, ladies doing a fantastic job, and we got some other ones that's mowing out there to, to help out, too, and John and I've been helping, too. So, the parks are looking nice yet, and stuff, so... Uh, matter of fact, I think we got, John, on that one, who's, is it next week's Spader, isn't it? Look on the one under, behind us. 'Cause I think we got Saturday and Sunday again, don't we? Or is it just Sunday? Yes, we are. Is there somebody this weekend, like?
In the Brown, American things, yeah.
Oh, they're, they're in the Brown Shelter House? Saturday? Noon? I don't know, they can take anyone, I think, they, they're gonna have a back-to-school badge that Chuck got ahold of, and... They're gonna use it for the back-to-school kids for all four, thirteen to fifteen, I think it is, or something like that. It's on the fifteenth, isn't it, Cammy?
Fifteen from two to six. Could we get that posted out there on that sign?
Sure, sure.
At the bank, you mean, Cammy?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll get ahold of Carol, she'll...
Yeah, that's right, just came from those reflections, so, we'll need for the back-to-school badge.
And that's gonna be on August fifteenth?
Yeah, from two to six.
Okay. Yes, mm-hmm, we're donating that to them.
Yeah, it's a free event for all teens, so if you know any teenagers that have nothing to do on that...
Don't they have a time limit? Why isn't it thirteen to... Don't, why isn't it thirteen to fifteen, wasn't it?
Thirteen to fifteen, but if there's a twelve-year-old that kinda is mature, you know, that you'd fit right in. They're gonna have, uh,
Even if they're immature.
Kitty kickball and all kinds of free prizes and stuff like that, so, free food from scooters here in town, so.
Okay.
There you go. I don't.
There, you can pass for, you can pass for thirteen, I bet.
I bet, yeah.
Spader's in the brown now, and there's a one seven in the orange.
On the fifteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we'll put, put them in the green one then. In the restrooms, when we, we have something like that, I go out and I make sure the restrooms are cleaned and, and they're open, so.
Like I said, that's on the shirt.
Okay.
Okay, well, cool. I'll call ya.
Nice to find volunteers.
Yeah, it's nice to find volunteers.
All right. That's good, we'll use it.
I'll say, I like, I like that stuff, I think it's nice to meet.
It is. Okay, zoning, Scott?
Pretty quiet yet, nobody's stopping home, so, that's good.
Those skyscrapers.
No, no, nothing, still being built.
Not right now. I think it's been too wet for anybody to do anything, it's starting to dry out, I don't think I'd be getting several months.
What do we got, trying to mosquito, I, I don't mean any rough like that, but.
We gotta do it, we gotta, type of bass comes, comes in and sprays.
I think I'll make some grow.
Yeah, I got thirty-pound mosquito in my backyard.
You got a what?
Thirty-pound mosquito in my backyard, someplace.
Yeah.
Right to mow it, day, broad daylight.
Oh, yeah, round ditch, right.
With all the standing water around it.
That's why you're.
Oh, yeah, but, we don't have a mosquito.
Well, for one thing, it costs, what, about twelve hundred bucks?
Oh, yeah.
You know, each, mosquito spraying.
No, two fifty each time.
Oh, two fifty each time?
Yeah, yeah, next time he comes in, it's two fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, what do we do with that thing?
Well, maybe the bill was total was two, two fifty.
Oh, yeah, cause he billed us for two times.
But I think you gotta be, you gotta be licensed to spray the stuff, right? You know, John, I mean, you gotta have a license to spray that kinda stuff, you know, like.
And then, and you gotta post it because of people with asthma, I mean, it's just, you know, I just don't think you're gonna get rid of them until frost. Right.
Winter, we will, we'll have to be rid of them.
But you're knocking down a little.
Well, you notice that there's a lot of mosquitoes because, uh, off went up to five ninety-nine, it used to be three ninety-nine.
We're in the wall.
You know, there's a lot, that's true, you know, there's a lot, yes, yes. Them, boy, they got us, I tell ya.
He's been spraying in the village or just out of the car?
No, village, yeah.
In the village, in the village.
Oh, no.
Here, we gotta do it again, man.
Probably you survive, forget it, oiling again, John. Okay, we'll go to old business. We do the second reading of ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh-seven. An ordinance amending rules of council with the attached additional rules of council as a pledge to best for Ohio. That'll be the second reading.
Can I go on record concerning that for just a second, please?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna state on record that I'm very much opposed to that for a couple of reasons. Number one, when we look at the actual document, it says listed below, there is nothing listed below, there's a hodgepodge of information from previous council meetings, there's no page one of two or any coordination of making that understandable by anyone, including myself, so I just simply wanna go on record that I'm vehemently opposed to the way that's being pushed through. With the next reading being the third reading, I just want the village folks to know and you folks to know that I think it's completely wrong. That's all, thank you.
Okay, next we're gonna go into the income surveys. Uh, John's gonna get, let's see if Robert is in the office yet this next week, and then we'll get the surveys, the addresses, uh, put out, and council will take them around door to door and we'll be, so listen, I'll have Brandon put it on the official village website when we're coming and.
Is it just gonna be certain addresses, or are we gonna go house, house, like we did the last time?
No, it's, it's certain.
Certain ones, because they.
What are they gonna be for, just survey?
It's an income survey, it's, that we have to have every five years, that, uh, it, it makes us eligible for grants that we don't have to pay back, that it's free money for us, cause we're kind of a low to moderate income. Uh, so it puts us in there to where we're, uh, be able to get grants at no cost.
I think, I think we did get something like in the.
Well, you did, but nobody sent them in, that sixty, we had sixty-nine out of, uh, what, two hundred?
Well, I'm guilty of that, because I really didn't know what it was for.
Yeah.
I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
You don't, your name, your name is on there, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't send it, I'm guilty of not sending it in, cause I didn't understand it.
Yeah, she did, she didn't, uh, fill out, because she says, what's it for?
Yeah.
What, what's it retained, you know, the whole thing, so she just talked to me.
Mention that. That's a book from the state, so, we have to have those surveys, we don't see them, we shouldn't write stuff.
It goes right to the state.
Well, yeah, like I said, I didn't, I didn't understand what it was for, or I, or I would've.
Well, there was a bunch of stuff on the Facebook about it.
Facebook, I think it was posted in the post office.
I didn't hear her say that. Did you see anything on Facebook about it?
No, I wasn't on Facebook, I didn't know nothing about Bethville site, and so, I think I talked to John the one time.
See?
Well, cause you have yours.
I made my washer and all my stuff came out brown, and he said, look on the Bethville, I, I didn't know they had a Bethville site, so I'm on it now.
Okay, yeah, all that kinda stuff will be posted, I think, uh, so we'll make sure everybody knows it again, and, cause we have to have so many, or we, we, actually, because of this year that nobody, not only sixty-nine people sent them in, we're not eligible for anything this year, but we need to get it so that we can, we're eligible from here on out then for the next five years.
Okay.
So, that's what it'll be coming around, will be coming around to you upon, and you just.
That's not saying that you'd be on the list again, that they do, uh.
Random.
Yeah, they do random.
Uh, Regional Planning Commission actually sets up a, they do a regional.
Like I said, when we got it, you know, I thought, what's it for, you know, I didn't, you know.
Well, I had an idea, because of first resoning in cities, so, so sure, so. Grant money is very, very important.
Yes, especially this.
It is, especially little towns, yeah.
Because without being loaded now, or we get right in there. Put this to the front of the list, so it, it has helped us out.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna debut it once we get the, the randoms?
Once we get that, and then I'll give everybody a call, and we'll pick, it'll probably be not next week, but the following week, we'll get it. We'll have everything printed, we'll have everything, and we'll go running with it, we'll take whatever consensus is, who can do what on what nights, and we'll just do it. Get it into them, so that they get enough of them, so we get eligible again.
Hey, this, uh, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm just kinda curious, what's this ordinance? That you guys are trying to pass on the third ordinance, or?
Oh, the second reading that we did today. It was, it's, our, we have an ordinance that tells about, uh, how council people can ask, uh, acts and so forth, and what different things you can do and, and not do, and so forth, we got copies of it, you can have.
But ba- basically, it's for this council?
Right.
Yeah.
It's a structure of how you interact with each other and, and, and handle situations and things like that. And how you resolve issues, that's what it's for, how, how, how you structure things in a first conflict, how we have, have means to control it, and, and so we can have a civil discourse and not a.
So, you're, you, you as council people can only, you can have two people meet at one time, or?
That's already a.
That's a, no.
No, it's already covered.
Right, right, I understand that.
This is trying to. This is talking about behavior of council person.
Trying to stretch those things even further, make them more encompassing.
But you don't have it written down?
No, it is written down.
It is written down.
Yeah, it is written, yeah.
It is written down.
Ask for a copy, see if you can understand it.
Well, he said it had.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Okay. Anything else on your old business?
I talked to Chris Waterfield in Bowling Green, and he wants us, and I, I spoke to John also, he want, Chris Waterfield wants us to get up-to-date uh, school zone signs, and he said he would come and, and assist in setting up the, uh, the, uh, extension of, uh, school zone, he just, he wanted us to have the enforceable signs up, cause ours are rather old, he saw them on uh, Google Maps, and I drove through in town, and, uh, you, you gotta have the reflective, there are certain requirements now, and we wouldn't be able to write a ticket on the ones we have now, actually, uh, because if you don't comply with the, uh, the standards, and I gave a copy of that for John also, but, um, he probably has one already anyways, but, so, John's already said, hey, I can get the signs, but I need, he, I think he needs to talk to, uh, Chris as to where to get the new ones. And I think it was just like, within the past two, two years, that they started having more requirements for reflective signs, so.
Uh, actually, that's not completely true, but you've got an extension till two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, but he strongly, he strongly, strongly suggested, um, well, the, these are older than even what would be the old signs, they, those look like.
Well, we need to get updated.
But he will come and, and assist, um, the extension of school zone. Once we get those up, and he'll assist us, and that's a simple, straightforward form, that the, the emphasis is on safety for children getting to and from school. So, that's the emphasis.
So, is, is it, is it more than just signs, is it what crosswalks and all that stuff too, we have to deal with, and all those things, I mean?
Well, they have school crossings.
So, I mean, do we have to look at all that stuff too, as well?
And he'll come and help look at everything, at that, and help set it up himself.
Tell us what we, what we have to do.
I mean, John's probably the most knowledgeable person here as to.
So, we can do it three hundred feet from the building in any direction.
Yeah, but, but we want.
But we're confined to that three hundred.
But we wanna, yeah, but, but he'll help us and do the extension.
Cause technically, where the signs are at right now are not legal.
Yeah, they're, and, and they're all pretty close, actually, cause I, I, three hundred feet's a football field, right? So.
Has anybody measured it? Have, or have we determined the three hundred foot thing yet?
I'm sure when we do it, we'll.
No, I think when, when it comes time.
That's what I'm getting at.
Chris, Chris will, Chris will come out and assist with what needs to be done.
Cause I know the one that used to be on David Street was cleared down by King Street, and I know that's way too far away.
Yeah, well, there's one I mow around every, there's one right there that I mow around every week too, so.
Um, street signs, okay, can you get any street sign you want, or do you have to ask permission or whatever? All right, now, now that the road's done, Route twelve, all right, they are flying, and if we aren't gonna have a policeman here during the day, can we put up a sign that says, uh, speed limit strictly enforced, I mean, these truckers are gonna have to learn, you know, that they've gotta slow down, or it's gonna hurt their licensing, you know.
You can spend the money and put up absolutely whatever you want, but, go back to what you said first.
What?
You don't have an officer on duty.
Well, yeah, okay, well, yeah, but, well, yeah, I know that.
This part, this part of the cruiser out there, he's.
But if, if they know.
Woody does it all the time.
Maybe if they saw the sign, they would think a minute, you know, because they think, oh, oh, well, maybe there is somebody out here, you know.
Actually, I would probably have to double-check with Chris on that, cause it doesn't stay around.
It doesn't stay around.
I don't know if we can put them up entirely.
Not on the state route.
Yeah, you can, speed limit sign, that's your thing.
Not on the state route.
Well, this wouldn't be a speed limit sign, we already have the speed limit signs, I'm talking about strictly enforced speed limit.
You can put that up. The only thing you can't put up is, uh, a, a certain sign, if it doesn't measure to what the state standard is. That's the only you gotta worry about.
I might have to stand up.
And you can call the state in, and they can do that.
Maybe I can stand out front with a poster board, you think?
Stand up, do it.
Who's, who's your inspector out here?
Just throw a basketball in front of it as a.
They are, they're flying, though, they were.
We, we had a car that went through town at sixty-three miles per hour, and that was what he was clocked at. He never broke, once he heard sirens, he didn't break for the light. And I said, why would he? Why would he? And the, the path, by the time he was able to catch up with him was clear out of town. That's how fast that car was.
But he's still writing the citation.
Oh, sure.
Well, sure, and he did, to my knowledge.
But my question was, who is your state inspector on this research and private?
That was Deb, Deborah Pinion.
That's who you could get a hold of.
I have her card.
To put, to find out if I'll put the signs, it won't cost nothing, it's for the state. He's doing it all the time, Paul, there.
O dot out of Bowling Green.
There you go.
District two.
Anything else on your old business? Okay, if not, we'll move on to new business, Magistrate Street. There was no magistrate report, huh?
I haven't seen any.
There were, there were no tickets.
Oh, no ticket.
None that were contested for night court.
Okay, so we're not. Okay, we'll go to, we've had complaints on barking dogs at night, late at night. Uh, down by your corner. Um, I know Jason has sat out there at night, cause Brandon's told him to, to, at different times, is, see if we can see where they're coming from and so forth. Uh, last night, I went down about nine-thirty, and stayed there for a little while, there was nothing. And our alarm went off at the bar, so I went out about eleven-thirty, and I come back around here and sat for a while, and it seemed like everything was all quiet. So, I mean, you're just gonna have to catch them.
Barking.
When, you know, when they're on the thing, but. And I'm, and I'm not so sure that when I hear a whole bunch of dogs, that it isn't the guy behind them.
Yeah, yeah, cause you can hear him about four blocks away.
Cause I can travel a long, long ways away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we're gonna have to talk to him. Cause I think, I don't know if he works nights or whatever, but I know they're out all different times, and they always bark when they go out, so. If the neighborhood, then you.
But if, if myself or someone else were to hear it, like, go on for forty-five minutes, my neighbor Lisa has talked to me about it, you don't want me to go approach the people, do you? Because a couple of months ago, I approached someone on something, we were told as council people, we're not supposed to approach residents, that's the law enforcement people, is that, do I understand that right?
Sure, but I mean, as a neighbor, I would, if there's one of your neighbors.
No, no, it's people up the street and people behind the bar, I think, who I don't really know, but I would approach them, but I was, the understanding, we're not supposed to do that as council people.
Or you can do it as a citizen, that it's bothering you, it's, I mean, it's.
We're just gonna be careful, those people are very cranky.
That if we get a pinpoint in that one, we can, we can get somebody in there to talk to them.
I don't know if you remember that deal with, uh, Murphy, uh, auction, but I went and talked to somebody about a parking situation, and I was reprimanded for that, so I felt that I'm not supposed to go talk to anybody, I'm supposed to get a hold of the police chief, I guess, or, or now is it okay for me to go talk to somebody? The dog barking people, cause I'd be happy to, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, see, probably, so there isn't too many of us.
This is part of that enhancing the, what we're supposed to do and not do.
So. But I mean, I would do it as a neighbor, but would.
So, sometimes I should and sometimes I shouldn't.
If somebody was upset me, I'd, it doesn't matter whether it's me or not, but I mean, I'd do it if it upset me, I would go talk to them and say, we're gonna have to do, fix this situation, or then the law will be called in, or the dog warden or whatever we had to call.
I mean, I thought we, we had already put together an ordinance together for a limited number of dogs, where we were talking about it.
We're talking, we have not done that.
I really thought you was gonna bring one tonight. I really thought we discussed it last month.
I thought, I thought we decided, like, you know, we was gonna go with like four dogs, like that, cause we, cause the issue comes down to is that, I mean, I, I think he's got like twenty of them, I think.
Yeah.
How many dogs do you have to have before you have a kennel license?
Yeah.
It don't matter, they tell us, because we checked on it, he had seventeen licenses.
Yeah, as long as they're licensed, he doesn't have to have a kennel license.
And there are, and that makes him, but I don't think he has that many dogs now, but he's got ten or better, yeah.
Do you have an elf?
Do we have a.
Well, he gives it pretty clearly in these.
Do we have a disturbing of the peace ordinance in this town? Do we have a disturbing of the peace ordinance in this town?
Trying to think, and, you, see, the, the village code is basically the Ohio Basic Code. Dog barking would not be disorderly conduct.
Okay.
You, you know, it, tell me the number, and I will have a dog ordinance, if you want.
Well, can you, can you enforce it then, once we do that, if he has already ten or fifteen dogs, if he don't get grandfathered?
It's not gonna be a grandfather.
You need to pick a number, now, of course, you know, they, a dog is gonna be, a, a dog that's six months of age or more, and it's not gonna include puppies, things like that. But that, that's up to you all, you pick a number, and that's fine, whatever the number is, you can start high and work down, uh, um, you, you can, uh, I, I'm, but it, it, so, as far as the dogs themselves, that can be done, a, as far as the barking is concerned, um, you can have an ordinance to that effect also.
Ripping their throat out.
I, and that, that's, you know, I'd, I'd go somewhere and I'd find somebody who has a valid ordinance to that effect, to.
But I'd really like to see an ordinance, I mean, we've been working on this guy for several years.
Well, tell me to, tell me with a number, and then you guys can vote it up or down.
I think four's.
Four's plenty, I think most, most people have two, maybe one or two dogs, but, you know, but four would be plenty.
Just bear in mind that, that, that just controls what animals we can have here in town, it doesn't control their behavior.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Do you wanna? Do?
Two?
I'm sorry?
No.
The county.
I don't think they have.
I don't think they have.
They don't have, you can have as many as you want, yeah, but they don't, you don't have to, you can have as many as you want up there.
Do you want something in regards to barking dogs at certain hours also?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
As long as they're licensed, you don't have to have a kennel license.
Well, while we're on new ordinances, can I bring up a new topic also?
Sure.
Okay, and, and it's because the Regional Income Tax Authority sent a memo out, state legislature has changed Title Seven as to how we're supposed to structure our tax laws. We can have the same rates, same exemptions, but we have to have a new model ordinance that they've kindly provided, we just have to fill in blanks to fit Betsville. Uh, for them to, first of all, administer our tax, and also for it to be effective, starting January first, so I'd like your permission also to just put in.
Well, we're starting out.
Our, our tax rates, and I'd like to do it as an emergency, because they'll want it early in order to implement.
Sure.
I think they'll, it's, if we're using their model ordinance, which is what they highly suggest, which is, which is here, filling in different, um, different things that, that, um, may vary for each municipality, um, then they'll be okay, so I don't wanna change the exemptions, obviously, or the rates. But, uh, what they've indicated is, and they're the tax experts, they said if we don't do this, uh, in order to comply with the new Title Seven, section seven fifteen or seven eighteen, House Bill Five, um, then our important things, we expect that, and we want to implement it, although it'll be easier for them to implement. Our old ones up on their site, and I can see why they prefer something standard for everybody, so if you're permission, I'd like to do that, present it.
Yeah, I think we need it.
It, it's, you know, voluminous, uh, it goes on for forty-seven pages, fifty-two, actually. But the important parts that are for us are the rates that I've, you know, three sections that I've tagged here.
You don't present that tonight?
Hmm?
You don't present that tonight?
Um, no, I don't have a rate, I wanted to talk to people before I just came in, said, hey, because they, you know, it was, um, just the end of, uh, July, that they sent out the memo, July twentieth. And so, I, I just wanted to let you all know, and why, um, and, uh, what I can do i- is, uh, I can have their model here, so you can look at all the details of it. But my focus is mainly the exemptions and the rates, uh, that type of thing.
Well, I think we gotta be consistent with whatever, you know, whatever the state wants us to do, I mean.
Yeah, and, and Rita's.
Yeah.
Obviously, they put the work into, to get something that be acceptable, so. You know, what I can do is, is I can leave this, my copy of the memorandum and the model ordinance right here. I, um, oh, we don't see each other again for a little bit, do we? I'm gonna do the same thing for. Yeah, so, I can bring, I'm, I can get one to you.
Oh, okay, yeah, just so I got a good title, it, it looks like I don't need it tonight, but.
Wherever. Is there a meeting Thursday? Is there a, a meeting Thursday or not?
Atticus is heading there.
No, the other.
Oh, yes, but I won't be there, Atticus moved there, so it's a matter of fair.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll leave this one here, you and I can talk, and I'll get you a copy.
Just so I have a title for you, when you're gonna introduce it.
Uh, chapter seven eighteen of the Ohio Revise Code, that, the, that, you want a title of the ordinance? An ordinance to amend, uh, the codified ordinance as the Village of Betsville regarding municipal income tax. And I'll read that slower after the meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna take out, you're gonna do the ordinance on the dogs and that?
Yeah.
Rick, do you know if the city of Tiffin has a dog barking ordinance of any kind?
That's usually the first place I look, um, you know, I, I've never had a, a docking, a barking dog case come through as a municipal prosecutor for the whole county these past, well, there's plenty of vicious dogs, so, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but I, I'm, you know, this isn't the first time somebody's thought of this, so I'll find one somewhere. Let my fingers do the walking on the internet. I, I'm also, if I find it in the Ohio Basic Code, I'll let you know, but I'm, I'm not recollecting one in the Ohio Basic Code.
Okay, that's all on the barking dogs, then, I put, I put streetlights on here, because, uh, what we need to do is get the word out, so, report the streetlights to us, so that we can get them called in. I went out last night around town, there was three of them that was out, they'd come on, go off, come on, go off, so I called AEP, they give us job numbers, and I said, within ten days, they'll be, they'll be fixed, so. When you, when you report a streetlight out, you have to have the address that it's near, and the pole number, out on the pole that the streetlights on.
Is that, they got that little metal thing?
Yeah, that's a metal tag, that'll say, like, two ninety-five eight three, and then underneath it, there's like a five or a forty-two or whatever.
That one's from me, it's on and off all the time, and it's dark, when it's on, it's really dark.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's really dark.
So, we, so, we just wanna make sure that the people know how to report it, and if they just call the utility office number and leave us a message, we'll, we'll get it taken care of for you. Because we don't wanna, we don't want them out, but it sure does dirty things, make it as bright as we can. Okay. Anything else under new business, or? Yes, go ahead, John.
Can we do up an ordinance for dumping on village property, and maybe try and get this mess cleared up here? Because, uh, there's people hauling brush in all the time, and then some guys pick it up every week, so I don't know where it's all coming from. I watched a guy haul brush in here all day today, when I was going over there and out here, same truck, all been on, he's hauling his whole truck loads of brush. And I have no idea where he's coming from.
Is there a sign out there that says, no dumping?
We need an ordinance for no dumping, that's what I.
That's what he just said.
What else besides brush? Just anything?
Brush and leaves.
No, leaves and grass clippings, we always let do.
What's that?
And leaves and, and, um.
Grass clippings, yeah.
I don't know what you guys wanna do with that, because technically, that's illegal too.
What, dumping, uh, leaves?
Under EPA, you go, that's illegal, has that proper drainage and all sorts of.
Well, I know that, I, because I was sitting across the room, I went through that.
So, I don't know, but the brush is a major issue.
Yeah, because we had that cleaned up, it cost us, like, thirteen hundred dollars, I think, when we had a big chipper come in and do it.
And we had, we had, that was when we had it cleaned up last year, this year, we cleaned it up again, and hold it all up in the park, and, and now we're right back to the same predicament we were three months ago. So.
Because that's why we do it, we go around every week and pick it up.
Chip it up there.
Yeah, we chip it up, and then the chip pile's out there for anybody that wants to use it, use it. What is that rate, I don't know, will they stay up with it, come in like that?
Probably, it's coming up from out of town.
It could be.
I don't have nobody that can check places, plates or nothing either.
Brush, leaves, grass, then, is what people would suggest, or, yes, no?
So, no, you're just gonna make a sign saying no more dumping, or whatever, or?
Where's people supposed to take all that stuff, then?
The brush is being chipped.
Like in front, in front of your house, yeah.
If you live in town, you, you put it by your curb, and what, every other Thursday?
Well, I've been doing it every Thursday, because there's been so much brush out there, that we've, we've been doing it.
Been doing it every Thursday.
So.
So, what do you do?
This, this fall, we'll take leaves and just put it out by the curb?
No.
What do you, what do you guys, you guys pick up leaves?
No, we don't pick them up.
So, then you're gonna make an ordinance, say that people can't bring the leaves out here?
That's gonna be a tough call.
Yeah, that would be a tough call.
What are you gonna do with them?
I don't know, a tree is so. I burnt, I burnt mine.
You didn't get caught?
Who's gonna catch them? We, we have no, we have no police at night.
Yeah, you have them at night.
At night, you do?
I haven't seen one down there at all, not at all.
No, I, uh, with the twigs, when she was on, I'd see her come up down the alley all the time, but, she was always checking, you know, driving around, but lately, I haven't seen anybody.
I know, I know Jason's been on doing, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying he hasn't, but I mean, I haven't seen anyone, but I'm just going back to the thing, you know, what are you gonna do with the leaves? People that have grass clippings, you know, or the forest, or you can take it out to the compost pile and dump it, done it for years, you know?
And I'm not disputing, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, we have a big tree out back, and I mean, it drops and drops and drops, you know, you're constantly breaking constant.
You know, we wanna keep the town clean, so we have to figure ourselves through with this stuff.
How's it been, John, with people, what we run into also, you know, it isn't just the leaves and the grass clippings, people put all kinds of stuff in there.
Oh, yeah, I, I've seen that.
You know, I mean, this is, this is why, you know, we had to get rid of the, the dumpsters and stuff, they would just garbage it, you know, so, there's always somebody that's, that's gonna ruin it for everybody, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm using.
I mean, I picked up car batteries.
Oh, yeah, awful.
Just ridiculous.
Oh, I, I, you know, I, I see where you're coming from, because I've been there, but the same aspect, what are we gonna do?
But I, I would think that we could use a compost pile with leaves and grass, but.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people come on, got it, I, I haven't.
We're about fencing it in, and then having certain ages, we drop.
That'd be expensive, unless you got a grant for it.
We'll sign your paper this month, and we'll see, okay?
He gave her an ad.
Well, you know, of course, she threw it away, I'd probably will.
Yeah, okay.
But she didn't know, and I.
Yeah.
We probably ought to at least address the, the, the brush.
The brush is the biggest issue.
So, I think, let's do an ordinance on the brush, then, and we gotta, we gotta come up with a solution on it, because you do get a compost pile out, so, I mean, look how much bigger it gets, I mean, we've pulled a lot, lot out this year, but there's still a lot out there. You know, I mean, we got, so I'm not sure what the solution is on that, because, I mean, an EPA and all this, I mean, that is a big issue.
Well, if it would just be leaves and that, I think that would go down pretty good, but it's the idea, if we say, okay, with leaves and grass, then somebody's gonna, they'll dump garbage and stuff in.
Well, yeah, if you don't have somebody out there setting, I'm gonna have a problem, so, in case.
We're gonna put you in charge of the, of the, of the.
Four ordinances, but we're not enforcing the ones we have.
I had something great, I said out there, hell, that's.
That's the problem.
We'll fix you with something.
Did you hear that, Gary? We've got four ordinances that we wanna enforce here, write up, but we're not enforcing ones we have. So, you know, we need to start enforcing the ones we have, too. We can write them till the book's this thick.
I think the only way to take, put no forms, or you keep on your, you don't wanna turn it out.
You gotta give the tickets.
Now, doesn't your zoning have the authority to?
Zoning only covers buildings.
Buildings and swimming pools.
Does the mayor have the authority to take it?
Stop riots, I'm gonna be hard. Under the Ohio Revise Code.
Well, the legislature, it, don't they have, uh, can't you, uh, check into that?
Check into what?
Give them the mayor's police powers, or?
No, the policeman's gonna have police co- powers, that, I, I wasn't joking, that, under the ORC, the mayor can stop riots, and, uh, how in the world they think he's gonna do that? I don't know, unfortunately, we don't have riots here, but, um, you know.
But I'm, but I'm looking at.
As far as the other ordinances are concerned, except for the income tax, that's either for a dog warden, or for a police officer, law enforcement officer, that's for them to do, that we've discussed here.
Let me ask you this real quick, we're about to take up much more time on the whole ordinance thing, but, like, today, when I, I'm on mower, or seeing this guy dumping all this stuff, that, if, if they just say.
Take a picture of the driver, take a picture of his plate, submit a report to the officer, he can follow up, investigate, and say, who's the guy driving, what's the plate, and I'll find him, and we'll get a ticket out to him, or get a bench warrant for him.
So, the same thing is with your council people, they see somebody out of order, they take a picture, and, uh, produce some evidence, then you would have to follow through with it, or the police officer?
Not me.
Don't you arrest people?
Well, I don't go arrest people, and I don't investigate, and I don't file complaints, complaints are submitted to the police department, and then they investigate.
Then what's your job on council?
I, I'm a solicitor, so I give legal advice, I write ordinances, resolutions, I go to night court, I prosecute cases in night court, um, give legal advice, but I don't go out and write tickets, or investigate. Make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I just, just wondering, I'm, I'm new here.
No, 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 and, and people said, gee, what, I, I've had a number of people say, well, what do you do if you see someone speeding? I wave.
Watch how fast you wave.
Well, my fingers, but, you know, I, I don't have, uh, that type of.
Yeah, you don't have the authority.
I, I'm, I'm just a civilian, as far as that's concerned.
Okay, anybody got anything else under new business to bring up? If not, um, as promotion adjourned.
Joycey.